...live, and that means we had to get forced to work sick. We handle food, and that food get contaminated.
Certainly for those workers, it's a big issue. A broader issue, I think, is the impact on the community and on families. Health and welfare is an important quality of life issue.
One doctor at St. John's Clinic says this next case could have been avoided if the worker had been allowed to take a sick day and see a doctor.
She had fever, infection, and trouble up to her kidneys. We had to send her to the emergency room.
Stores like Walmart, another chain on the workers' target list, offer two sick days a year, but only for full-time workers, and the first day off is unpaid. The L supermarket does not guarantee a full 40 hours for full-time workers. Price plans to look into other businesses in the area to see how prevalent the problem is. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The tour was organized in part by the ShopWell-LA Coalition, a collection of local groups that hold grocery chains accountable to the neighborhoods they serve. If you're planning to remodel a bathroom or a kitchen, weekends are your enemy. It's when permitting and inspection offices shut down. But as Yana K explains, an expanded city service is making life easier for homeowners.
The Hughes family is enjoying a relaxing Saturday afternoon at home. And while they're taking it easy, city inspectors are busy examining their bathroom down the hall that's under construction, making sure it's to code.
Yeah, we've already approved the plumbing.
City inspectors are now available to do inspections for remodels or construction projects on Saturdays.
I think it's fantastic. I mean, increasing customer service so that people like me, who I work all week, I can actually have, be home and not take off time during the week to come in for the inspector.
The idea is simple: city inspectors take a day off during the week to compensate for working on Saturdays.
I want to create a kind of a small-town feel in a big city. And that's what this does, on a Saturday, to say, "We serve you, not you serve us."
Inspections are required by the city whenever a homeowner is remodeling or doing any kind of construction.
Anytime you get a permit to do work on your house, it covers installations that are covered up by wall materials or buried in the attic or underneath electrical plumbing, mechanical, structural issues, they have to be inspected before the wall surfaces are replaced.
Mayor Eric Garcetti says there is no additional cost to the city, and he expects to have about 120 inspections each Saturday. I'm Yana K for LA This Week.
The Los Angeles Fire Department welcomes a new rank of firefighters. Rasha Goel has more on the new recruits and what makes them so special.
Bryce Gutierrez is among 58 new Los Angeles Fire Department recruits. Not only that, he was also honored as the overall top recruit.
Started out as a cadet year, and this is where I wanted to be. Since I was 15 years old, Los Angeles Fire Department is the best fire department in the nation.
Once they pass the selection process, recruits are put through rigorous training over a 20-week period.
They have a series of didactic or classroom lessons, which are pretty intense. They have a very rigorous physical regimen. You'll see today some of the demonstrations of the results of what they've learned.
You're getting up early in the morning, and you're putting your boots on, just doing hard work, and it's just longevity, it's a lot of work, but it's real well worth it.
Due to budget constraints, this is the first new graduating class in five years. The last set of recruits was brought in 2009.
You are the first class to join a department that is now dedicated to the best data, the latest technology, and constant assessment, to creating a dynamic information-based approach that can cut our response times and improve our fighter-fighting capability.
These recruits are the ones that will get us from good to great and from great to outstanding. So this is the future of the fire department.
But there were no female firefighters at this graduation ceremony. Hopes are that will change in upcoming graduating classes. In Panorama City, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The LAFD has been under criticism for its recruiting process, which is currently under review. It's a project that will safeguard LA's water for many years to come. The LA DWP gave the media one last tour of its massive Headworks Reservoir Construction Project before it closes it off to the public. Anna Marcos brings us an inside view.
Take a good look around. It's the last time you'll get to see inside this future reservoir without scuba gear on. The first of two of the LA DWP's Headworks Reservoirs will soon be closed up and filled with water. The two Headworks Reservoirs north of Griffith Park are the DWP's response to new federal water safety regulations.
The two reservoirs that we had in service, Ivanhoe and Silver Lake, they're open-water reservoirs. And so because they're open-water reservoirs, they're subject to contamination in terms of, you know, you have birds flying over or landing on the reservoirs and such. And so because of the tightened regulations, these are actually large tanks that will be buried, and it's much better in terms of the water quality.
This east reservoir will be the size of two football fields. The walls and the slab underneath us will be four feet thick. And once it's done, the entire thing will be covered with dirt. It will be underground, and a park will be built above it.
The water is actually going to come from our North Hollywood pump station, and right now it's going to come down the old reservoir conduit, and it's going to come into the site through some piping, and then it's going to make its way inside of this reservoir. From here, straight to the faucet.
It's anticipated this will add about 3,000 jobs to the economy and about $500 million a year. So this is a big boost for the city of Los Angeles.
Once the east reservoir is completed later this year, construction will begin on the west reservoir. The Parklands restoration will take several more years. It's a project that will bring better water quality, more recreation opportunities, a better environment, and more jobs to the city of angels. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The Parklands restoration phase of the project will be part of the LA River Revitalization Plan. The reservoirs will serve all of LA, but primarily the areas of downtown and near the zoo. New federal grants could equal a big boost for aerospace and manufacturing in our region. As Gil Reyes reports, Southern California receives special consideration to compete for money thanks to an effort co-led by USC.
LA Mayor Eric Garcetti congratulating his partners at the University of Southern California. They've secured rights to compete for grants that could be a home run for Southern California aerospace and manufacturing.
We're there at the plate, and we're swinging for the fences. And today's announcement is the result of us being loud and clear in Washington that we're serious about jobs here in Los Angeles.
President Obama is setting aside $1.3 billion to kickstart aerospace and manufacturing in the U.S. His office has selected Southern California to be among 12 U.S. regions eligible to compete for grants. The selection follows months of lobbying from the Office of LA Mayor Eric Garcetti and USC.
I'm glad we won. Now we can really get on with the work, the work we all want to do.
The city of LA and USC are part of a consortium made up of over 80 organizations: universities, businesses, government, stretching from Ventura to San Diego counties. Partners like Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Pasadena could apply for money to enhance robotic space exploration, while LA community colleges could use the grants to boost workforce training programs in advanced manufacturing, something the mayor strongly supports.
I want to make sure that Los Angeles is ready for the jobs and the economy of the future.
In hopes of taking the region's job opportunities to the moon and beyond. At USC, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Other regions selected to compete for grants include Chicago, Milwaukee, and Portland, Oregon. And the mayor is also setting his sights on making Los Angeles a leader in the tech field. The city kicked off its first Internet Technology Forum at City Hall. Anna Marcos has more.
City leaders are inviting cyber nerds to start hacking.
Not long ago, the term hacker held a wholly negative kind of connotation. Here today, we are in City Hall, and we're encouraging you to hack. Your job is also to bother us, to prod us, to poke us, to disrupt us, and to shake things up.
This was the first ever TechLA 2014 forum. As part of the event, Mayor Eric Garcetti hosted a so-called Hack-a-thon. The city is opening up its government data to Angelenos with the goal of partnering with them to create new technologies.
We know Los Angeles is the best platform for innovation, the highest rate of entrepreneurs in the country, more than 1 out of 200 residents. We know it's the most diverse place on the face of the earth, the best geography, the best weather, the most incredible intellectual and creative capital. But now it's time for government to do its part.
Think about the hundreds or even thousands of companies who are using open government data today. You've got companies like Zillow and Trulia, who are helping you make better informed choices as you buy your home.
Students work together to come up with functional apps for everything from improving their communities to encouraging more civic engagement. Prizes for best apps range from $1,000 to $3,000, awarded by such sponsors as Google and the I Am Angel Foundation.
We want to make sure that our young people see their potential in technology careers, that they're not just playing games, but they're coding games. They're not just on Snapchat, but they're building the next Snapchat.
We need you. This city needs your talent. This city needs your imagination, and this city needs your creativity.
LA was reportedly the birthplace of the Internet. City leaders are now doing everything they can to keep it the leader in the cyberspace frontier. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
In case you're wondering, it was at UCLA in 1969 where it was believed that a student typed the first message on what was the precursor to the modern Internet. Luxury lofts, new restaurants, and public transportation are all helping to reinvent downtown LA into a thriving and livable community. Rasha Goel takes us to the Reinventors Award, where some of those responsible for the transformation were recognized.
It's taken over a decade, but downtown Los Angeles has gone from gritty to glitzy. With new housing, entertainment facilities, and more public transportation options, downtown was recognized by Dwell Magazine as America's most successfully reinvented metropolis.
Downtown really was not a place that everybody thought, "Oh, I can't wait to move downtown." Like you would say, "Can't wait to move to downtown San Francisco, or Chicago, or New York, or Boston." Well, now you can say that.
Four honorees, including the LA City Council, were recognized for their contribution in reinventing downtown LA. Fay Washington, president and CEO of YWCA Greater Los Angeles, was honored as well. The new seven-story YWCA building on Olive Street serves 1,200 disadvantaged youth, providing not only a place to live, but schooling and job placement.
My dream came true. Just to see those kids walk in and out of that facility is just a pure joy to me.
Honoree Klein Financial Corporation was recognized for bringing upscale housing to downtown. Robert Klein's company develops luxury apartments such as this one in downtown Los Angeles called Met Lofts, and provides an affordable component, giving everyone an opportunity to be able to live in downtown LA.
We reserve at least 20% of our units to provide a step up to families working to secure gracious living.
And there's no question, downtown is the place to be. Officials say in 1999, there were 18,000 people living downtown. Today, there are 54,000 and growing. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Carol Schatz, CEO of the Central City Association, was named Mother of Reinvention for bringing together individuals and companies to turn downtown into a vital and thriving community. Closing a loophole in the city's attempt to shut down illegal pot shops, $50,000 in reward money is paid out to a tipster in a murder case, and Congressman Henry Waxman gets a proper send-off in City Hall. These stories and more in City Beat.
It appears that a list of potentially illegal medical marijuana dispensaries operating in the city was not shared with those in the city responsible for shutting down such shops. The issue was discussed during a city council committee meeting recently. The list in question belongs to the Office of Finance. It's of pot shops registered to pay taxes to the city. Out of the nearly 1,000 dispensaries on the list, more than 800 registered with the city after the September 2007 cutoff date approved by voters under Prop D, aimed at limiting the city's pot shops. Councilman Paul Corcoran has asked finance officials to provide the list to the police department and the city attorney's office for enforcement purposes. The city council often offers reward money in hopes of solving murders, kidnappings, hit-and-runs, and other crimes, but seldom do we hear of that reward money being claimed. But Councilmember Bernard Parks's office announced that a $50,000 reward payment was awarded to someone who came forward with a tip on a suspect that eventually helped solve the 2011 murder of Alonso Esther. The suspect, Dennis Brown, has been sentenced to 16 years in state prison for the killing. Parks released a statement saying, "The awarding of this reward proves that if you know anything regarding a crime, please call the authorities. These rewards do get paid out." Lovers of public transportation, listen up. The Board of Airport Commissioners has approved new flyaway bus service to and from LAX for Santa Monica and Hollywood. The buses from Santa Monica will be nonstop to LAX, located at the Santa Monica Civic Center. Service is expected to begin mid-July. The Hollywood Flyaway Service will be located on the east side of Vine Street, half a block south of Hollywood Boulevard, and will make one stop in both directions at the Metro Expo Light Rail Station at La Brea. The Hollywood service is expected to begin in mid-September. One-way fares for both flyaway bus routes will be $8. The LA City Council honored retiring Congressman Henry Waxman during a special council presentation at City Hall. Waxman is completing his 20th term in Congress. To recognize him for his contributions as a public servant, Councilmembers Paul Coretts, Mike Bonin, and Bob Blumenfield named Friday, June 13, 2014, as Henry Waxman Day in the city of Los Angeles.
I am a born, bred, lifelong resident of LA, and I've had the great distinction of being able to represent our city in Washington, DC. So this recognition means a lot to me, and to have a Henry Waxman Day at City Hall is a great tribute.
Cutting down on pollution, finding funding for transportation projects in LA, and the Affordable Care Act are a few of what Waxman says are his proudest accomplishments.
Two graduating students recently received a big surprise. This after surviving a fatal bus crash on their way to tour a college. Rasha Goel has more.
For banning high school students Karen Duarte and Jonathan Gutierrez, this graduation is one they may never forget. The two are survivors of the Humboldt bus crash in April of this year that left 10 people dead, including five high school seniors from the Southland. Students were on their way to a college tour at Humboldt State University when their bus collided head-on with a FedEx delivery truck on Interstate 5 in Orland, California.
Thankfully, thankfully, they survived and did not let the crash impede their goal of going to college.
Duarte and Gutierrez think they're receiving their diplomas, but they're leaving with a surprise from Councilmember Joe Buscayeno and the nonprofit organization Sharefest.
And we are making a commitment to you, and offering and presenting with them a scholarship of $5,000 each, so that you ensure that you fulfill your dream.
The audience responds with cheers and applause. Both students will be attending Humboldt State University in the fall. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
In this week's list of things to do, an early Independence Day event, Latino and Asian food fusion, and an exotic animal show for the whole family.
Kick off the Independence Day holiday early at the Port of LA with a visit to the sixth annual Cars and Stripes Forever Car Show on Friday, June 27, from 5 to 10 p.m. It takes place at Swinford Street and Harbor Boulevard in San Pedro. In addition to more than 100 classic cars on display, the free event will feature live music, a beer garden, food trucks, free rides on the red car, and dancing water shows at the Fanfare Fountains. Fireworks start at 9:20 p.m. Go to lawaterfront.org for details. Food Fusion takes center stage on Saturday, June 28, at La Plaza de Quedora y Artist, otherwise known as La Plaza. Asian influence in Latin American cuisine dating back to the 1560s will be examined by Art Bites's Maite Gomez-Rejon in Chino-Latino Food Fusion from noon to 3 p.m. at La Plaza, which is located at 501 North Main Street downtown. Participants will have an opportunity to sample foods and take part in a docent-led tour of Chinese-American museums, LA Heat Exhibit, which examines the impact of sriracha and tapatio hot sauces in Los Angeles. Admission to Food Fusion is free for CAM and La Plaza members; $5 per person for all others. Go to lapca.org for details. And on Sunday, June 29, the Skirball Cultural Center is holding its Zoo-to-You event in its family amphitheater. You and your kids will get to sing along with performers, dance to music from around the world, and rub wings, scales, and claws with live exotic animals. There is one show at noon and another one at 2 p.m. Children must be accompanied by an adult. The Skirball is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Information on ticket prices can be found by going to skirball.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
If you're looking to keep your kids busy this summer, your local pool may be the perfect solution as a free swim program gets underway. Yana K reports.
For these kids, swimming is one of the best things about summer. And to help keep them in the pool, Kaiser Permanente has kicked off its ninth year of Operation Splash.
Where we can have swimming available to kids, where they can come and exercise, where they can come and have fun with their friends, and it's just a great way to spend summer.
Kaiser Permanente, Councilmember Mike Bonin, and Department of Recreation and Parks officials announced the free program at Stoner Park Pool in West LA.
That many don't realize that this department was really founded on two things. One was playgrounds, and the other was swimming. And they've got a great tradition of aquatics here in our department.
As part of Operation Splash, Kaiser Permanente gave the Department of Recreation and Parks a $265,000 grant to provide free swim lessons for children and adults at Los Angeles City Pools. Experts say activities like swimming help kids stay entertained while helping fight childhood obesity.
That's so important for kids, to have fun while they're being physically active.
Kaiser Permanente officials say they are committed to promoting healthy living for all LA residents, and Operation Splash is the perfect way to meet that goal. I'm Yana K for LA This Week.
The pools will be opened through Labor Day weekend. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll leave you now with more sights and sounds from the King's Victory Parade downtown. See you back here next week for more of LA This Week. See you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
During California's next major earthquake, an epic battle will take place. Don't fight a brick. The brick will win. DareToPrepare.org.
Hi, this is Caratello family.
We are from Los Angeles, Ohio Heights.
You're watching Channel 35, our city, our channel.[153.31]
This is where?
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, I would like to run through the agenda.
First, there's a request to continue items 1B to July 29th and 1D to July 2nd.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Items 1 through 3 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that item 1E may be received and filed in as much as a lien has been paid.
Okay, that's fine. Cards?
Cards on items 1 and 3.
So let's take up 2, or did we continue that one?
No, 2 is available.
Okay, there are no speakers on the queue, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes. And Mr. President, for that item which is an ordinance, the ordinance will be held over till July 29th unless reconsidered.
Okay, all right, so let's move on to items 4 through 14, correct?
Yes, items 4 through 14 are items which public hearings have been held. Item 4 has been waived by the Housing Committee, and an opportunity for public comment should be provided.
Okay, do we have cards on 4?
No cards.
All right, so Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to call item 10 special.
10 for Mr. Corretts. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. And for items 5 and 6, the ordinances will be held over till July 29th unless reconsidered.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Fuentes?
May we send item number 8 forthwith, please?
Without objection, 8 forthwith. Let's move on to items 15 through 22.
Items 15 through 22 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Cards on items 15, 16, 18, 19, 20, and 22.
Okay, Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that item number 16 be continued until Tuesday, please?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
That's July 1st.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's vote on the items that have not been called special. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to items called special or presentations.
All right, so Mr. Englander? If I can request your assistance?
Mr. Wesson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I have two presentations for today. Both of them are very, very special presentations to me personally. First, I'd want to start off with our, bring Teddy over here. With our Pet Adoption Friday program, what we have is a mixed lab that is about too much old. Arlene here named him Teddy. You can change that if you, but he does kind of look like a teddy. Again, a lab mix. He's had all of his shots. He's ready to go home with you right now, today. I think that he will grow up and be a good protector for your home. And one thing about these animals, they give you unconditional love. Now, here at the city of Los Angeles, we've been doing this program. In fact, I started it nine years ago, and we have a 100% adoption rate. That means every dog that has been presented before this body has found a home. Now, I have Arlene with us today, and Arlene is gonna kind of walk him around and see if she can get folks to fall in love with him. And those of you that are watching us, if you like Teddy, call 888-452-7381. That's 888-452-7381. Again, we have a 100% adoption rate, and we want to keep that going. Now, we do our very best to find homes for not just dogs, but all of our pets. But it is almost, it is impossible. So when I'm asking you to adopt Teddy today, in essence, what I'm asking is that you guarantee that his life is saved. So by adopting him today, then you will not only have a friend for life, but you've saved a life. So we're gonna have Arlene, oh, look at that, now that's, that's... My wife is watching Teddy, so we got a problem. I can't sneak you home. But anyway, we're gonna have Arlene stay here for a bit. Anyone in the building that wants to, you know, give Teddy the once-over, anybody that wants to take a picture so that they can send it to their significant others and get permission, Arlene will be in the corner at the side of chambers for a while. And let's please keep our 100% adoption rate alive. So who could say no to that face?
Mr. Wesson, it appears that Teddy has the crazy socks on that you've been promoting, so...
Yes, he does.
It's got your name on him.
Like, he has four pair of crazy socks on. You know, Socks would have been a good name for him. And he's got a diamond in the back of his head. He's a cutie. So look, let's find a home for Teddy, and let's find it today. So Arlene, if you would step to the side just for a bit and show Teddy off, and let's see if we can find him a home. And here's the paperwork. Okay.
And let's give him a round of applause for 100% success rate so far in adopting every dog that Mr. Wesson's brought to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And now, for a very serious presentation, I have a few gentlemen that are with me today that I would ask to come behind me. And where's the coach? There he is, come on, Pete. Circle around. I should have worn my green suit today. Anyway, I have young men from Dorsey High School with me this morning. And Dorsey is one of the high schools in the district that I am blessed to represent. For so long, members, I have sat in my chair and watched almost each and every one of you. In fact, I think Mr. Fuentes was the most recent that presented a championship team or two from his district. But I have watched it all. I've watched Mr. Parks do it. Today is my day. It is my honor to present to you the Los Angeles City Baseball Division II Champions, the Dorsey Dons. Give them a round of applause. Now, the last team, the last time that Dorsey High School won a baseball championship was 56 years ago. And as we all know, baseball, it's a challenge to keep baseball going and afloat with the way things are today. But we have individuals committed to teaching this great game to our young people. And I have with me Coach, I just call him Coach Pete. It's a special relationship between he and I because we both graduated from Lincoln University in Pennsylvania, the oldest African-American liberal arts school on the planet. So let's give Lincoln a round of applause and his championship coach. Another thing that makes it special, I'm looking for him, but I have the principal. Where's Dr. Sample, raise your hand? That's the principal, give the principal. The principal happens to be my fraternity brother. So we, with the coach from the school that I went to, and my fraternity brother as the principal, they were able to bring home a championship that they haven't seen for 56 years. Now, we do have Doctor, is it Willard or Willie Love? Where is he at? Where's his, I want him to raise his hand. Where are you? This young man, that is the same height as me, was on the last baseball championship that Dorsey won. Correct? And another teammate is here. Where are you? Kenny? Oh, he's taking photos. Okay, now what position did you play?
I played third base and outfield.
Third base and outfield, Kenny, you played? He was a utility man, played it all. Now, rumor has it that when Dorsey High won this championship 56 years ago, that the game ball disappeared. I have information that would lead me to believe that we know where the game ball is. Is there any truth, Doctor? No, I'm not gonna out you on that. But if, guys, you go search his house, you're gonna find that darn ball. I know your third baseman has it. But this is a team that, and Dorsey High School, a high school that I've always loved and supported. I've supported the baseball team, basketball team, women, I mean, football team, women's basketball team. You have great young men here. And later, we're gonna present each and every one of them with a plaque or a resolution with, I think it's the number of the jersey that you wore will be on that. So we had it tailored for you. But when our young people do something that's good, it's our responsibility to give them an atta boy and a pat on the back. And I can say to each and every one of you without pause, the members of this team, as long as you live, you will never forget that last hit, that last pitch, and that last out. When you're in your rocking chair telling your great-grandchildren, I mean, it will be as vivid as it was yesterday. So I personally, as a former coach, congratulate you. I congratulate the principal and the coach. And I would like to ask everybody in this building to give the Dorsey Dons the applause that they earned on the baseball field, the champions. Coach? Coach, you wanna say a few words, and then maybe I get Dr. Sample?
I'd just like to say it's an honor to be here today. I try to get these guys to realize that baseball can take you places, and after winning the championship, look where it's brought them today. But my final thoughts are, before I go to bigger fish, is players win games, coaches lose them. I just happen to be around a bunch of young men that were dedicated to playing the game the way it should be and trying to restore that Dorsey history. Thank you very much.
And I want to ask, is it Dr. Sample, Kamani? We're gonna have to say a few words? And just so you guys know, this Coach Pete is led, known for his legendary practices at 7:00 AM in the morning. So now, I'd like to bring up the principal, a fine young man, an example to these young people himself. And that's in my dear friend and the principal, Dr. Sample.
Good morning, councilmember and distinguished guests. No, I'm very honored to be here today. Words can't express how I feel, but the bottom line is, we want to instill positive energy. And I always talk about Dorsey pride. And what I mean by that is making sure our students are prepared, our students are responsible, they show integrity, they have determination, and they strive for excellence. So I'm just thankful for all these individuals because it truly does take a village to raise a child. And great leaders don't know everything. We surround ourselves around people who do. So I'm very grateful for my mentor, Mr. Love, who was the principal who preceded me and showed me how to better serve our students in our community, and Mr. Bagby. And everyone here has played a very instrumental role. I want to thank Coach Dobson, Coach Outlaw, and Coach Charles for a wonderful job in not just teaching these young men about baseball, but instilling life in them. And I think that's the important thing, is teaching them life. We make a living by what we get, we make a life by what we give. So thank you all for your support. Thank you.
And Dr. Sample, I'd like to present on, to you on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, a plaque that I hope that you will hang with pride at the high school. I will be there on Monday to make sure you have it in a prominent place. But this basically tells the world, it memorializes that you are the champions. Congratulations to all these young men. We're gonna go now and take pictures in the back. All right.
Let's hear it for our Division II City Champions. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, with that, Mr. Walsh, we'll call you up on three items, on item 1. Actually, yeah, item 1, item 18 and item 20. So we'll give you all your time and...
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at JWalshConfidential, or tweeting at HollywoodDems. We appreciate that you've set aside this period of time during the meeting to hear from me. We're very happy. And I signed up on 1, 16, 18, 20, and 22. I know you have a habit of losing these cards, but those are the items. Starting with item 16, again, this is reap. We're hearing more and more from people who have listened here, have gone to their landlord, have pointed out violations, code violations. The landlord did nothing. They went to the city. The city contacted the landlord and gave him 30 days to repair the violations, the code violations. The landlord didn't do it, and now the renter is paying their rent to the city, not to the landlord, until the landlord fixes the complaints. Number 18, this is one of your duller agendas, but in any case, this is a social media workshop. I'm surprised, $319 you're gonna pay? I'll do you a social work, media workshop for 99 cents, and I'll donate it because I am getting millions of hits. Anybody who wants to see my analytics, you just send me a web request, and I'll show you. I do better on my website than some of you lesser people up here, lesser-known people up here. That is number 19, social work, social media workshop. Number 20, and that concerns the Valley Cultural Center. This is very important. See, in our city, we are totally segregated city, unlike any other city in America. And ask any black or brown person who's been in another city. We have two big 4th of July celebrations. The one is for the white people, that's the Valley Cultural Center one. That's where you go if you're white. And if you're black or Hispanic, now Glory Molina has set up a 4th of July celebration at Grand Park. Unfortunately, they don't have enough police, and we predict that there will be a lot of problems there. Don't go if you have small children downtown July 4th. Go to the white parade, go to the White Cultural Center because it's gonna be very, very dangerous downtown after dark. Because after dark, as you know, the gangs control the city of Los Angeles.
Item 22 as well.
Item 22, and item 22 is... This concerns the $160 million in financing low-cost housing. Excuse me, this is a senior healthcare facility. If you compare the cost of construction here in the city of Los Angeles for nonprofits, not for nonprofits, by the city, it would cost 50% less in New York City to build the same thing. It would cost 40% less in Miami. This is incredible amount of lard, and we'll see what happens, but it's $160 million in bond money. This is very, this is utterly out of control. You'll see me later at the special meeting, but stay tuned when I could speak on anything I want because I'm gonna tell you who the next city councilman from Weezer's district is.
Thank you, if you could, again, on subject, thank you so much. Thank you. Herman? Come on up, on items 1, 3, 18, and 19.
Angelinos, Batman returns. I wrote on my card under the Brown Act, Fruitcake Batman, but let's get on topic now. I'm talking about the consideration of the habits of this city of Los Angeles. And I, Batman, want you to know for the record that we, the public, deserve the consideration when it comes to liens. They're illegal and predatory, and we want the FBI to investigate it on your behalf, the taxpayers. So the fruit bat goes on to talk on item 18. Did you say item 3 as well, sir?
Uh, yes.
Item 3, hearing determination of public convenience of necessity for alcohol sales for the off-site consumption, 7-Eleven convenience market. How dare we, at this time, when our children are influenced by your negative behavior? Mr. Weezer's not here, but his DUI...
Again, stick to the topic only, to the topic.
And then when I go back on topic to talk about alcohol for public convenience, what about Mr. Stowe and the Dodgers? He deserves what? Medical for life, Dodgers? Because I, Batman, sat at that office, up in that office, right down the street, regarding Mr. Stowe's heinous crime of being beat because you cannot, as a city, provide a service of LAPD? But I, Batman, am returning...
Okay, that's not on topic. Okay, so if you want to go ahead and go to 18, you can do that?
I'm on item 3, sir.
3 was a 7-Eleven.
So 7-Eleven, we have plenty, circle K's, we have plenty. Alcohol convenience and necessity is an alcohol disaster, a disaster, a crisis, and so let's wage the war on alcoholism, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Price, Mr. Sadio, because Mr. Sadio knows I'm right. Only in Boyle Heights and in the poverty of us, yes, because in Caucasian communities where there are 7-Elevens, it's only for the minority, a minority. And Batman wants you to go back now on topic 19, as he slowly turns the page to keep you online on topic. Item 19, Van Nuys video conferencing regarding Ms. Fuentes and Martinez relative to amending our prior council action, April 29, 2014, regarding the lease for the Pacoima Neighborhood City Hall of Pacoima Beautiful. What's beautiful if we don't have Van Nuys cooperating with us under this convenience of public service, ADA, American Disability Act? So we can have beautiful participation in all meetings, all meetings. Item 18, Englander, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Englander, are we listening? Social media workshops in City Hall? Tom Bradley up above me. And I say, we, the people, demand and request action for social media video conferencing for the public. I represent the civil rights of many constituents here today, and more so our youth who don't have higher education to understand that social media workshops are important to educate and to learn your First Amendment rights under the Brown Act when it comes to social media. Our Constitution states, and I won't get into it, it's too long, city attorney knows how bored it can get, right, Dion, Mr. O'Connell? But we, the people, are showing you that we have a right, and we taxpayers have a right for the justice system to correct the illegal action of you not providing video conferencing and social media. I demand an action for those who are elderly and disabled. My sympathy to you all for this interesting meeting here...
Can you address the council?
Has ignored you for many years. And I'm gonna go back and relate about my last item, Mr. Englander, is this. We cannot be social without good teachers, teachers who understand what social media workshops at City Hall are about. For example, Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, has always said, "Pay attention, public comment." Thank you, folks.
All right, Arnold Sachs on item 1. Excuse me, if you're gonna be yelling from chambers, then you're disrupting the meeting. We'll ask you to leave. That'll be your only warning. Item 1 and item 22, Mr. Sachs. Morning, Arnold.
Good morning, sir. Thank you. Do we all get four minutes or five minutes? We get five minutes on the items?
You got two items, two minutes each.
I have three items. 1, 16, and 22. But this speed, agendaizing...
16 was continued.
16 was continued.
So you have 1 and 22.
But this speed reading agendas where you don't post them up there is really a violation of the Brown Act because the people come in late, and the item hasn't been called, they don't get a chance to sign up for it. And you're not putting them up on the board in the order that they're calling them on. That being said, I did hold item number 1, it's a building and safety item. You even have, and the reason I hold this item is not to deal with the liens, I don't really give a patoot about that, it's use of personnel, which item 16 addresses is the fire department. You know, you're awarding positions for fire department. So your use of personnel, the building and safety personnel to go out and inspect buildings for lien violations or code violations, but you don't use building and safety personnel to go out and inspect foreclosed blighted property. And that's a quality of life issue. And the claim in the newspaper stories recently is that building and safety doesn't get calls on those. No calls in four years. As a matter of fact, the last story was, and you just had a special meeting regarding the city attorney's office wanting to put in special prosecution against banks, against blighted foreclosed property. But in four years, no building and safety personnel have gone out and done an inspection on any of the blighted foreclosed property in the city of LA and issued a citation. Why not? You do items like this, you do items where you... You do items like this, you do items where you specifically authorize specific personnel for certain agencies, you even have an agency come in here to discuss employee activity that was illegal, but you don't have an agency come in here and say, "Well, we're not inspecting these homes because..." Because why? Well, because you don't want them to. And so why do you go through these motions and activities when the facts are that you're not going after the banks? And you're not going after those agencies because you don't want to, instead of going through all these motions and just wasting time. It's about the personnel. It's always about the personnel and the lack of use and foresight of the city council. That being said, item 22 is a Tefra loan. And again, there was another story a few months ago where you were going to do some development, and also in this item, in Willowbrook, but it was shot down because of certain monetary features. $160 million in bonds for acquisition, building, updating, upgrading, and whatever. One of these items in here, you do an accounting of how that money is going to be spent for a different item on your agenda. How are you going to spend $160 million in acquisition of property? What the cost for building this property is going to be? What the cost for staffing this property is going to be? All this detail worked out, a lump sum of $160 million in Tefra loans doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be spent on this project. And if you could do it here, why can't you do it in Willowbrook? You have a big, huge housing development that you had planned, and it was shot down for like $10 million in upfront money because all this other money was dependent on that. So talk about that to the public.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the next speaker will be on Ms. Ramirez on 15 and 19.
Let me begin with 19. Thank you for censoring me, Mitchell Englander. Council members Blumenfield, Fuentes, and Martinez, let's make some grave and typographical error changes, shall we? Pacoima Neighborhood City Hall for Pacoima Beautiful? Are you kidding me? Do we look deaf, dumb, blind, and stupid? No pun intended against the physically challenged, for they have more sense than these three council members. Pacoima is ugly. Pacoima is ugly. Pacoima is ugly. Pacoima's a neighborhood jungle. Pacoima's a Latino jungle, gang-infested and wetback-infested, who live and act like pigs. They drive like reckless maniacs. You have theft every three seconds. The grocery stores are filthy, old, stale food and rancid food. Graffiti is their Mona Lisa ambiance. Dilapidated homes everywhere. Look at the filthy debris on all the streets. Look at the broken cars. Pacoima is a national disgrace. I'm surprised you're not going to be bringing in all the wetback children that are coming in, over 90,000? You'll probably stick them in Pacoima. Number 19, excuse me, number 15. Resolutions is what we want before you, and what we want is answers to these perplexing dilemmas. Who enforces a rule of law? When it comes to habitability and/or breach of habitability, who enforces a rule of law? When there is loud, toxic noise, does code enforcement or LAPD or the city attorney give the citations or citizen's arrest? Who goes after these loud and nosy, public nuisance neighbors? The city isn't enforcing it, West LA Police Department isn't enforcing it, Rampart isn't enforcing it, then why are we paying as taxpayers money to these bogus city agencies, including you, city attorney? What do you make, $200,000 a year?
Okay, that's off-topic.
Honestly, we need answers and we need solutions. You are doing absolutely nothing to curb the problems and the crimes in the city. Again, habitability, who gives the citations? The city attorney, the police department, or code enforcement? Again, who tackles the problems? We are left holding the bag, gentlemen. Again, as law-abiding Mexican-American, I come here in good faith and fair dealings. I am not a gangbanger, I am not a wetback, and I am not a...
Again, that was your last, that was the last warning of being off-topic, so. Okay, thank you, so you're, again, off-topic, so that'll be the last time, so your time is up. Thank you so much. Now you're disrupting the meeting. So one more disruption from the meeting, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. With that, let's go ahead and take item 20. 20's before us, seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes, that carries, and we'll go ahead and go back to presentations. Ms. O'Farrell, are you ready?
Yeah.
I'm going to stand right here, and we'll have Mrs. Gant stand right here. Let's do that. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. This is one of those very extra-special presentations today, and I have standing with me Mrs. Clara Gant. I have also with me the Korean War Veterans 21 Nations Support Committee and an additional hero, Mr. Pil Kyun Kim, a Korean War veteran himself. This morning, on this occasion, we help honor an American hero, a Korean War veteran and a community organization for their efforts in supporting veterans of the Korean War and their families, especially as of June 25th, just a couple of days ago, marked the 64th anniversary of the Korean War. The Korean War began on that day in 1950 when some 75,000 soldiers from the North Korean People's Army poured across the 38th parallel, the boundary between the Soviet-backed Democratic People's Republic of Korea to the north and the pro-Western Republic of Korea to the south. The Korean War was relatively short, but exceptionally bloody. Nearly 5 million people died. More than half of these, about 10% of Korea's pre-war population, were civilians. This rate of civilian casualties was higher than World War II and the Vietnam War. Almost 40,000 Americans died in action in Korea, more than 100,000 were wounded. According to the Defense Department, nearly 7,900 Americans are still unaccounted for from the Korean War. I had the great honor of being invited to a block party at Mrs. Gant's house some months ago by the Korean-American 21 Federation and my friend Scott Su standing next to me to my right. And I'm so honored to introduce Mrs. Clara Gant, the widow of Korea, Korean War veteran, U.S. Army Sergeant, First Class Joseph Gant. Sergeant Gant also fought in World War II, transcending the racism of the time and persevering the integration of military services during that period. Sergeant Gant was assigned as a field medic, Battery C, 503rd Field Artillery Battalion, 2nd Infantry Division. Sergeant Gant's exact fate was unknown for 63 years, but Mrs. Gant dedicated her life to preserving the life and legacy of her husband and held out hope that her husband would one day return home. As it turned out, he'd been taken prisoner of war as he defended his unit's position near Kunri in December of 1950 and died as a prisoner of war in March 1951. Last December, during a solemn dawn Honor Guard ceremony, his remains were finally returned peacefully. Sergeant Gant's war medals include the Purple Heart and more than 10 others. Mrs. Clara Gant is our hero and represents for all of us the love, the pain, but the undying faith of our American veterans, their significant others, everyone who loves them, and a nation grateful to them. At this time, Mrs. Gant will say a few words, but I just got to let you know that she recently was at the White House where President Barack Obama held a reception for her in her honor and kissed her on the cheek. Mrs. Gant, would you like to say a few words?
Hello, everybody. I am so grateful to be here today. I have a long, long journey, but I made it. I waited for my husband for a long time. He wrote me one letter. I received it. I wrote him one letter, he received it. But we never heard anything more about the letters or about him until I got the letter from the War Department. I prayed and trusted the Lord to let me live long enough to receive the closure. And as the Master promised me he would, so I lived in order to receive the closure of my husband. So when they flew him into the airport, I was there, 5 o'clock in the morning. But when he arrived, it was late, the plane was late. But I told the officer I didn't mind waiting. I didn't wait 63 years. I could wait 63 more if the Lord said the same. So that was a terrible situation, but I made it through the war. He told me in living life, "If I don't come back, I want you to marry, get married again." In living life, I told him, "No, no, no. That's enough." He said, "You can never tell." I said, "Oh, yes." You knew you had a hard time for me to say yes to marry you. I had to check a lot of things out. First, I told him, "Have you been married before?" He said, "No." But I accept that in a way, but I wrote Uncle Sam a letter to find out if he was married before. I got an aunt, and he said, "You think I'm crazy?" I said, "No, you don't have to be." I said, "You remember, you take me to the base, and I saw so many soldiers had two wives, and I didn't want that. I have to check things out, I want you to check me out and see if I'm married before." So he said, "No, I'm not crazy." I said, "No, you're not." So I wrote Uncle Sam a letter and asked Uncle Sam, "Was he married before?" So Uncle Sam answered my letter, he said, "No, no, no." I said, "That's good enough for me." So I told him, I said, "Then now we can get married." Because I didn't want to be married, you had another wife, and I'm thinking I'm the first and I'm the second. And that's what my closure. I had a wonderful husband, he was very provided. He was very understandable. He accept us, we accept each other in our conversation, and we had a lovely marriage.
Wonderful. Well done. Thank you. Mrs. Clara Gant, the one and only. And Mrs. Gant, you're not going to go anywhere just yet. We have, we have another true champion, someone who organized the Korean War 21 Nations Support Committee, our dear friend, Mr. Scott Su, a champion in this movement, and he's going to say a few words now as well. Scott?
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell, and also Council President, well, Herb Wesson, for inviting us today here. As you heard, so many American soldiers died fighting for Korea, and we want to take this opportunity to thank not just Korean War veterans, also their family members. And I didn't realize until I met Mrs. Gant that we have so many local American soldiers went to Korea back in 1950 and fought and died. So as a Korean-American, we thank you. As a Korean, we thank their family, and I wanted to take this opportunity again, you know, for the city of LA and also entire city council for giving us this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you. This organization is continuing the process, it's a lifetime generational process of bringing this closure. The war never ended. We have a demilitarized zone, there was a ceasefire, but I really want to commend the incredible work that this organization is doing. And I would also like Mr. Pil Kyun Kim to take a bow, 87-year-old Korean War veteran. He deserves a huge round of applause. And what I also want to let you all know is that Mrs. Clara Gant is a resident of Herb Wesson's district, and our council president is a real champion of this effort as well. And, Mr. President, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President and members, and I want to thank Mitch O'Farrell for doing, and Scott for doing the legwork to put all of this together. But, Ms. Gant, you are the perfect example of what true love is. So you give each and every one of us hope during a society where there's just so much change that certain things can remain constant, as did your love. So I envy that. I salute you for that, and I'm just very, very pleased that the Lord saw fit to give you closure. And anything that you need, since you're my constituent, where's Avak? I will have Avak report to you everywhere. Avak's not here? We'll take care of you. Let's put, I will fill Avak in on what his assignment is, but if you need something, please don't hesitate to call. I do want to congratulate the veteran that we have in our midst, and just thank you for restoring, you know, hope in a society where love, it seems like the word doesn't mean as much. You bring us back to what the word is all about. So we are with you and support you and will do anything that we can, and God bless us all, in particular, bless you.
Oh, thank you.
And now we give certificates of recognition to our 87-year-old Korean War hero, Pil Kyun Kim, Mr. Kim. And to the Korean War 21 Nations Support Committee on behalf of Scott Su, and our treasured and now national icon, Mrs. Clara Gant.
You're welcome. Let's give him another round of applause. Oh, thank you. Very, very special. Appreciate that. There's a few items, colleagues, we could take up in the meantime. Items 1, 3, 15, 18, 19, and 22. Again, on the board will be 1, 3, 15, 18, 19, and 22. Those items are before us. We'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, and number 10, Mr. Coretts, did you, were you ready on that? Did you want to wait? We have another presentation.
If you want to do that now, I'm happy to take it up.
While they're still clearing out the chambers and making room for Mr. Price, we can go ahead and take up number 10.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out, as we know, we have to... we have to do everything we can before it's too late to deal with climate change. And this resolution supports President Obama's Clean Power Plan proposal to cut carbon pollution from existing power plants by 30% by 2030. And it's particularly notable that, once this was announced, China, which is not one of the great environmental countries, and in fact, probably every step we take in the right direction they're making in the wrong direction as we develop, they've now announced, or at least started discussing, that they're going to find ways to cut back on their own emissions. So I think it's a significant step forward addressing the worldwide climate crisis. And I think people watch what we do in L.A., so I think this is particularly important. I know we've already satisfied public comment, but there are a number of people that came in support anyway, so I'd like to acknowledge them and have them stand up and be recognized. So thank you for being here. The President deserves our support for taking this big step in the right direction. And if you don't count a little cow town in Texas named Austin, we would be the first city to take this vote. Seriously, we're the second city. And I urge your eye vote for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll open the roll. Mr. Fuentes, did you want to speak? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Fuentes. I just say, "Mr. Fuentes," and you get like a standing ovation. That's impressive. That is remarkable.
Mr. President, item number five. We only have 11 members present today. We need to get this done before we go into recess. So I'd ask that we reconsider item five and then agendize that for the next meeting on July 1st.
I believe it's automatically reconsidered on Tuesday.
Wouldn't it be on Friday? Because it's a week later.
Okay, first, we'll vote to reconsider the item.
Thank you.
And then, so we'll reconsider that item now. Open the roll and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay. So now we'll go ahead and then just, instead of voting on it, we'll continue it to Tuesday. And that way, it's not automatically on Friday, and that'll be the order without objection.
That's July 1st.
Okay, that'll be July 1st. Great. And on that last item, I'm sorry for Mr. Corretts, just on number 10, did we make sure we voted on that? Did we close the roll on that as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Excellent.
And also, Mr. President, there's a request for item 12 to go forthwith.
Forthwith on item 12 without objection. That'll be the order. And I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Price now for a presentation.
Good morning. Today, it's my pleasure to introduce the awardees of the 19th Annual Minority Business Awards. These awards are given to recognize and promote the region's minority-owned business enterprises and their supporters. This year, there are three award winners, all of which are leaders in their community. Congratulations on your achievements. We all know how hard it is to be in business today. So many startups fail, of course, within the first several years. The city has taken steps to assist new businesses, whether through the mayor's office, the Minority Business Center, the Business Source Center, or efforts of individual council members. As a part of the New Ninth Initiative, for example, we're creating a Business and Work Resource Center to complement services and to provide additional access. We all should be thinking of ways that we can help further and promote small and minority businesses in Los Angeles. They are the engines that create the jobs and are an important part of our community. As Chair of the Economic Development Committee, I'm honored to present this year's awardees. And let me ask Councilmen Bloemfeld and Kerkorian to join me. The ICDC Publishing is the Minority Professional Services Firm of the Year. ICDC Publishing is a small publishing company based in Woodland Hills, which is in Councilman Bloemenfeld's district. The company began in 1989 as a vocational training company, but over the years has changed focus and now develops innovative training materials, curriculum, and textbooks that facilitate through a variety of occupations. With the philosophy that training material should be methodical but also easy to understand and enjoyable, ICDC has been a leading publishing provider of vocational materials for over 20 years. They maintain, remain committed to the idea that facilitating effective job training makes a difference to businesses, lives, and communities. It's my honor to present this certificate to Sharon Brown in recognition for being a Minority Professional Services Firm of the Year. Congratulations. We'll take some pictures later. Next, we have Lumen 21, the Minority Technology Firm of the Year. Lumen 21 is a minority-owned IT consulting firm based in Orange and specializes in providing information, technology, services, and solutions to hospitals, healthcare providers, financial institutions, schools, government agencies, and manufacturers. The word "lumen" is Latin for "to see clearly," to understand. 21 represents a new century and all the challenges associated with bringing together the vast technological changes and options available in the marketplace. It's my honor to present Eduardo Don with a certificate of recognition for being named Minority Technology Firm of the Year. Transition Music and Media Corporation is the Minority Media Firm of the Year. Transition Music and Media, TMC, is based in Councilman Kerkorian's district. TMC exists to create, manage, and monetize media. TMC is a cutting-edge music and multimedia production company led by a team of award-winning entertainment industry innovators and supported by Grammy, Emmy, and Emmy award-winning artists. Most recently, they completed production of a national PSA to bring awareness to the dangers of autism and wandering for the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. It's my honor to present Donna Ross Jones with a certificate for being named Minority Media Firm of the Year. Congratulations. And I'll give my colleagues a chance to make--
Colleagues, may I have a word? Would you care?
Sure. Well, first off, Mr. Price, I want to thank you very much for spearheading this effort. It's really important. And I especially want to congratulate Ms. Brown. She's in the district and doing great work, promoting textbook educational materials and other things. And we really appreciate the fact that you're there. It's a great area, and we're thrilled to have you. And I'm thrilled to be part of this ceremony. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Price, for doing this important recognition. I think the exemplary businesses that we have before us today that we're recognizing are yet another example of why we need to continue to focus our efforts in this city on re-energizing local business and particularly small and minority-owned businesses, such an important part of the backbone of our economy. And I'm especially pleased that the business that's being recognized in CD2 is a music and media company, Transition Music and Media, because, Mr. Price, you and I and so many other members of this council have worked so hard to make sure that we continue to keep entertainment-related jobs here in California and in Los Angeles. And that's exactly what Transition is helping to do. So it's a great pleasure to be able to be a part of this. And thank you, Ms. Ross Jones, for being with us today. Thank you, Mr. Price.
Again, let's give all of our awardees a round of applause.
All right, let's give him a round of applause. Thank you so much. All right, that concludes the agenda of the regular meeting with the exception of public comment, of general public comment. So we'll go ahead and recess the regular meeting and take roll for the special meeting.
Bloemenfeld Bonnebus, Gano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caressa, Cora, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, Levinbergh, President of Core. Mr. President.
Right, thank you so much. We have two items before us, items 23 and 24. We do have cards on both of those items. John Walsh on both items, followed by Arnold Sachs on item 24 only. And Arnold, if you can come on up behind the second set of ropes to be ready. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Sachs?
Okay, thank you. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at JayWalshConfidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Okay, I have no idea what this is. And I just want to say to the people watching, they're not going to tell you why they are closing Runyon Park on the 4th of July. It's not on the agenda. Why? And because they say "public safety." Believe me, it's the safest place in L.A. It's west of La Brea. Anything west of La Brea is safe, because that's where they keep the police. If you live east of La Brea, you're on your own. We don't need to close Runyon Canyon Park. Some families do show up there at night to look at the fireworks. The place that you should close is Grand Park. That's where the gangs are going. The gangs aren't going to be hanging out in Runyon Park. I moved to L.A. in 1976. I've been going to Runyon Park for 38 years. And I've never seen any crime there. I've never heard of any crime there. But now, your bright idea, "Close Runyon Park." That'll show the gangs we want. And believe me, there is no danger posed by fireworks at Runyon Canyon. There is a hell of a lot of danger posed by fireworks right here at Grand Park, but you're not closing that. You're inviting the gangs to come there. And as far as the dispute resolution program is concerned, actually, you do a good job. Because when you do a good job as a 38-year-- here since 1976, 38 years, lived here before that in 1966. When you do a good job, I tell you. And I'm not here to masturbate for the 12 minutes. I say what I say, and I give you back the time. I'm not here to pleasure myself. HollywoodHighlandsSud.org. Yes, thank you. Oh, it's still morning. The speed reading is great. Thank you, Arnold Sachs. My question's regarding this dispute resolution program. It refers to paragraph, the Part III, where you're going to execute amendments for the fiscal years 2015, '16 through 2018, '19 for the same services in the amount not to exceed $200,000 per grant per fiscal year. Well, if it was $200,000 per grant, the total for each one of the grants would be $400,000. But you're not committing yourselves to $400,000. You're saying not in excess of $400,000. So the four, 1, 2, 3, 4 fiscal years, you're looking at a total that could be $800,000. But you're not, again, committing yourself to an amount. And when you're dealing with the county, it's the math that really matters. They had an item on their agenda a couple of weeks ago where it referred to two grants they got. Well, actually, one grant. 55% came from the federal government and 45% came from the state government for a total of 100%. And I think the grant was like $300,000. And the Department of Children and Family Services, the director had the authori-- was given authorization to adjust up or down 10%, depending on how the funding went or the performance went. He was authorized to adjust it by 10%. But he was getting federal and state money. How could he adjust that? That's why the math's important here. That's why you should pay attention. It is, after all, public money.
Thank you. And final speaker, Teri Reid on item 24.
Are these public comments? I'm sorry. As a matter of national security to these United States and to the world, this is the tribulation. According to Revelations 13:5, the satanic overthrow of our nation and this world--
Mr. President, I believe she means to have her comments on general public comment, not on this item in a special meeting. Okay, if you, if you'd like to just wait there for a moment, we're almost done with these two items, and we'll go ahead and open up to public, general public comment. Then we can take you first, if you'd like. Or you can have a seat, and we'll call you back, whichever you'd like.
Call me back.
Okay, we'll call you back. Thank you so much. So that concludes public comment on both items, 23 and 24, on the special agenda. Seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That adjourns the special meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there is a request for item 24 to go forthwith.
That's right. Okay, I'm sorry. Item 24, forthwith without objection, per Dion's request. And then on that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting, where we, I believe, have concluded the agenda with the exception of general public comment. And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 members are af-- are out. We have a number of cards. I'd like to give everybody the opportunity to speak on general public comment. And so we'll go ahead and add a minute to the clock for, to get through everyone. Otherwise, the 15 minutes would not afford everybody to speak. And we'll ask Teri Reid, Ms. Reid, to come back up.
As a matter of national security to these United States and to the world, this is the tribulation. According to Revelations 13:5, the satanic overthrow of our nation and this world are in effect all over this world. Under the uniting and strengthening America by providing appropriate tools required to intercept and obstruct terrorism, I, Teri Reid, do hereby, at this moment, make the, make the declaration of war on all, on all denominations here in these United States as they are all international terrorists under Section 2331 of the U.S. Patriot Act. And in addition, those prohibiting or har-- prohibiting, against harboring terrorists under Section 803, Section 805, material support for terrorism--
Thank you.
--Section 2339--
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. So next, I have Antonio Ramirez, John Walsh, and Arnold Sachs. Please come forward. Antonio Ramirez, I'm sorry. I apologize. I do.
You know, it is very difficult and very frustrating when most of us, who are not gadflies but come here in good faith and fair dealing, to bring about the problems because the city council members, who are getting paid over $200,000 a year, are not doing their jobs. But believe me, like I told Bonin and all the others, payback is a bitch. It all comes back to bite. You have robbed the taxpayers. And I, as a taxpayer, I don't make a penny, nor do many of these people who come here four, five hours. Most of us, like me, stayed up all night preparing, and then we get thrown out of public safety and/or we get counseled or we get denied a two-minute speech to a one-minute. I think it's unfair. It's wicked, and it's malicious. But you can get away with it because you're black, and Mitchell Englander is a gringo. And yet, many good people like us, we are basically being crushed and trampled. But believe me, it all comes back to bite. You will remember us. You will walk three steps backwards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Sachs, and Mr. Herman. Please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, JayWalshConfidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. I'm very sorry to hear about what's happening to Mr. Labange. As you know, he hasn't been here for a week. He suffers from a severe disease known as alcoholism. You see him, sometimes you can't even get out of bed. He comes to these meetings drunk. And incidentally, at the end, they are free to say, anyone up here, that I am lying about it. They're free to say it. In other words, if I said Mr. Kerkorian was an alcoholic, you'd all get up and say, "He's not." Because he isn't. But he is an alcoholic, and he deserve, he must retire. He must leave. Let me tell you what's happening. If-- If Perez loses the race for Secretary of State, he removes Weezer. Weezer drops out, and Perez runs for the city council. Everybody knows it, and the press has been told not to talk about it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, Mr. Sachs, Herman, and Ms. Hawkins, please come forward. Mr. Sachs?
10 minutes that changed the world, excuse me, five minutes that changed the world. Pretty interesting, actually, and I don't usually do this, Mr. O'Farrell's presentation with a Korean War veteran. If you have the opportunity, you might want to tune into CNN and watch the series they put on TV entitled "The Sixties." It's actually pretty informative. Gives you an idea of how things have progressed to come to the state where the city of Los Angeles is just a flush away from being totally in the toilet. Last week's presentation, Mr. O'Farrell, again, was crowing about the Echo Park refurbishment project that was $20 million under budget. Not under cost, under $20 million under budget. So, Mr. O'Farrell and the rest of the council members, where's the $20 million? What happened to the $20 million that was budgeted for the project that wasn't spent? Where is it?
Thank you. So, if I could now have Mr. Herman, Ms. Hawkins, and Akenya Jackson, please.
Is it unreasonable to say that Mr. Dumbo with the big ears or the premature child on this side says to me or us, the public, "Free speech." The Supreme Court rules that the federal courts has 874 departments, one, the Supreme, two, the appellate, and three, the trial. From 1789, Judge Kennedy Anthony Thomas Clarence and Paul Louis F. Jr. have said the Department of Justice rules and oversees all judification. And so, the buffer zones are a nuisance. This is a buffer zone, folks. This is a buffer zone. So, I say to you, Runyon Canyon, open it up to the public because you're in violation of all the disabled people who wish to go to the park in the evening from 5:00 on when it's nice and cool, and you're just an alcoholic, Mr. Labange.
Ms. Hawkins, Ms. Jackson, and I believe I have a Ms. Newton, please come forward. Benita Hawkins? Benita Hawkins? Kenya Jackson? Kenya? Thank you very much. Mr. Akala?
I'm running for mayor in three years. Pretty boy, Garcetti, move over. Krikorian, you're just a little runt. Englander, you have the years of an elephant, and you don't know how to listen because you keep cutting us down to one minute. The people are speaking to you, you idiots. Listen! And I know I'm screwing up my chances to become one of you, but you know what? I do not want to be one of you. You're all yes people, and all you do is screw up the other people around you. So, who wants to be like you? Nobody, Fuentes. Englander, Sadio, Buscaino, Bonn, Blumenfeld City Attorney, City Clerk, nobody wants to be like you, Mr. Price, Parks, O'Farrell, Martinez, Labange, Krikorian, you're a bunch of alcoholics, stupid idiots, and...
Thank you. I think I have a Teri Reed. Is there a Teri Reed? Oh, she already spoke? Okay, then it would appear that that concludes our general public comment for today. I do want to make an announcement, and a big thank you to Candy Rosales in the clerk's office for adopting the young puppy that we had today, so our 100% adoption rate remains. Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Mr. President, there's a request for item 14 to go forthwith.
Without objection.
Council has motions for post...
In fact, why don't we, all motions should go forthwith.
Except for item 6, there's a request for item 6 not to go forthwith.
Then, fine.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred. That brings us where?
That clears the desk.
Okay, announcements. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, there were six of us that were, have finished nearly one year in office. And so, I would like to invite all of you to a one-year celebration that I'm having tomorrow in my district. And it will be at Max Senate Studios in Silverlake from 11 to 2 o'clock. It'll be a community fair, a resource fair, a celebration, and I invite everyone to come and attend and enjoy themselves. Max Senate Studios is at 1215 Bates Avenue. And I want to congratulate all of the new six and Nury being the seventh. It's been and is an incredible pleasure serving on this body and serving the constituents of my district. And we'll take a little pause tomorrow just to celebrate it all. So, thank you, and I hope to see you all there.
Even us old guys?
Even you old guys.
Any other announcements? Announcements, members? If we could all... All rise? Adjourning motions, members? Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Helen Nathan, who passed away peacefully on June 23rd, 2014. She was born May 1925 in Calvert, Texas. She called this home until she was 21, when she decided to make her way west to Los Angeles and began to reside in the 8th District. She enrolled in LA Trade Tech, where she received an AA degree. She later became an instructor at the same school, teaching clothing, clothing construction. She enjoyed her job teaching sewing techniques to students, but after 30 years of doing so, she decided to retire. Ms. Nathan was very involved in the community. She was a longtime member of New Hope Baptist Church. She attended services regularly, becoming one of the pillars of the congregation. She was beloved by all who knew her most, and most of her family. Her services will be held Tuesday, July 1st, at 11:00 a.m. at New Hope Baptist Church. She was 89 at the time she passed, and survived by five children, 17 grandchildren, 26 great-grandchildren, and a host of family members.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Okay, I'll continue to look on this side, on Mr. Coretts and Parks's side anymore. Okay, now, I'll look to Mr. Fuentes's side. Any, Mr. Sadio?
Yes, I'm sad to note that a friend of ours is from Sacramento, a lobbyist, Caroline Alan Rodham, has passed away. She passed away just recently. She grew up in Quebec, Canada, where she spent her early years. She received a master's in political science, and in 1998, she met her husband and came to San Francisco. She was a lobbyist with the Teamsters. She was a big, big player on the high-speed rail. She was, if you knew her, she was, as it says here, she was "the essence of grace, elegance, beauty, and genuine kindness." She was extraordinary to be in the field of lobbyists because she was unlike most of them in her kindness and her grace. And unfortunately, at a very young age, she got an aneurysm and just fell over and passed away. And it's extremely, extremely sad for everybody who knew her because of her outgoing nature and her abundant kindness. So, that's our farewell to Caroline. And then, another personal loss. As you know, growing up in Bora Heights, we're very small, close-knit families. I have a best friend, a guy who's my compadre, the man who baptized my son. And we grew up together. We were best friends in the 4th to 6th grade, and then later on, in high school, roommates at Upper Bound, roommates at UCLA. Mario's mother, Kika, played a role, kind of a surrogate mother, as all her parents did. And she recently passed away. Her life was the life of many other stories that I talk about. People who come from northern Mexico, came north with their family. We all seem to be tied to the railroads. Their family was tied to Southern Pacific, and their family worked on laying, laying the track, actually. And she was born in Chino, California, in 1928. Later, she went back to Mexico, came back to the United States and met her husband, Mario's father, Miguel, who was a real intellectual man. And they lived right there in Bora Heights, on 8th Street in the arm. I spent many, many, many a day with them and was brought in as if I was a member of their family, as was my two brothers. And she, later, when Mario's father passed, moved back to northern Mexico, and then later returned and lived with her daughter up in Bakersfield, and she just recently passed away. Services are last night and this morning. And I ask that we adjourn in her memory as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sadio. And again, to my left, any other additional? Mr. Bonin?
Quick note, Mr. President. I adjourn this council in memory of Liz Smigala Tate a couple of weeks ago. Her services are tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. at St. Monica's Church in Santa Monica.
Thank you. Members, have a good weekend. This meeting is adjourned.